...in the open session. And from that, I'll carry on a motion regarding ad re admit.
Okay, I move to accept staff's recommendation to readmit student case number 09-10-2.
You have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Jeffrey, you can leave the stage. So we have an extension and we have one absence.
We'll pause your roll call.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead for Sparta.
Aye.
And Frankel?
Aye.
John?
I'm saying.
Yeah, I. And Frankel, while this passes. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll call this meeting to order and if everyone will stand and... Ready, again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item G, help and comment on agenda items and non agenda item provisions. This is the time and place to address the school board. State law prohibits the board from acting on issues not included on the agenda. However, requests may be made for discussion of specific topics as such as what means. Upon recognition by the president of the board, please come forward and identify yourself before speaking. The Board of Education reserves the right to limit speaking time to three minutes or less per individual. Do I hear any public comment? I don't seem to have any card. Go on. Okay. We will move forward then to the item H, notifications. Uh, state representative.
Hello, uh, well, this week is blackout week due to quarterfinals and started today. And we're off for a week and we come back on Tuesday, um, not next Tuesday, but following. And we jump into senior ball, red ribbon, red ribbon week, um, Santa Paula week and Renaissance. So we're busy.
Yeah. You're doing well, you told me on your finals, right Sammy? Yes, 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 yes. Alright, I see you.
Does anyone have questions, Sammy? Senior ball, is that the one, is it like Santa Paula type?
Um, yeah, for seniors and it's math grade change.
Oh. Maggie? I think they've done that before. Okay. Superintendent's report?
Okay. Uh, we'll start with Mike this time.
Not a whole lot to report. The state is still struggling. The politics are starting to come into play after all of this election year. So, um, whether or not they pull the trigger is going to be more politics than just math. So, um, we're stay tuned on the state budget. Facility wise, uh, next week we have some of the major maintenance projects we've been putting on. For example, um, changing out the air conditioning at the middle school because it, or this building because it uses a crane and we need to have the buildings vacant when we're lifting and no children around. Plus some of the work we're going to be doing at the high school in the science building, which is very invasive. So, um, that's just some major maintenance next week. Rio Vista, if you have a chance to go by, we're pouring the sidewalks around the school. We're getting ready, um, the parking lots in. We're putting up the plywood around two of the buildings and putting up some more iron. So it's starting to take shape.
Let me tell about the budget. What I'm carrying out of Sacramento is that it's an election year coming up. Because of that, we may be starting maneuvering to try to postpone the trigger that will cause a drastic decrease in revenue. We're not sure if that's going to happen, but, uh, you know, politicians, it's an election year. So they care more about they take their seat and they do about what they're supposed to do for us as citizens. But in any event, we're prepared. Mike's done a very good job of making sure that we're very prepared. We have money in the bank. So if it does happen, if it does happen the following year, if they postpone it, it will be double difficult. So even though you think you have a little easing off, it will be twice as difficult when they do pull the trigger. Because it climbed, it was about... Stock market is down how much today? It went up?
It went up 135 at the end on a kicker, but it was down 260 yesterday. Um, but there's not the jobs. Without jobs and people buying things, our state tax system doesn't work.
Congress bought a lot of stock. Must have been a big round. Okay, Todd?
Um, negotiations, we actually met with CSCA today and I'm happy to say we have a tentative agreement that was signed now for last year's openers and so that'll go to the Burbank office for approval and then back to members. And so we're hoping that gets approved so we can wrap that up and get into this year's openers. We also had a side letter that we came to agreement on, so it was a productive date.
See, Michael has a big one, a report with Chrissy today, so I don't, anything else?
Uh, yes, I'd like to add three ideas in addition to that report. Uh, there's a term that has surfaced three years ago nationally and is now beginning to trickle down to California since the state school board approved it last June, I believe. It is the core, common core, state standards. I'll repeat, common core state standards, CCS-S. And, uh, what has happened nationally is that they have worked, they meaning all the states have worked together under the direction of the federal government to unify all of the standards. Because right now we got these things that are the standards in math and language arts. So what they have done over the past three years to unify all the charts, the states took the best out of the standard from each state with the goal of having a standard to care all students for college and career. That was their goal. So they matched it to what's needed out of the workforce. They matched it to what's needed to be a successful college student. And then they created this common core state standards. The board, the state board in California voted those common core standards to be included in California's assessment system. So later on, in the next two months, I will be preparing a package, a presentation to the board to give an update on that. I'd like to make sure that our leadership here is aware of it, that they have a working knowledge of it. And then also give you a roadmap as to how we can prepare ourselves for the test that's going to be given to third, eighth, and eleventh grade students, starting 2014 to 2015. That's when we're going to implement the test to measure the success our students have in the common core state standards.
You know why they put that in effect? Because some states have very low expectations, very low standards. And then we have higher ones, we're being compared nationally with other ones who graduation rates even. You know, if your standards are low and you have to pass a case, you have to pass another kid, it's not real fair. So they're trying to get something that's equitable across all five states and that everybody has to come in. And that's just where it should be, that we're all going to be starting at the same starting line. This is where we start. Now let's find out just how well you're doing at the end of the race. As opposed to you start here, but if you're in Texas or Alabama, so you start over here. So you don't have to run a hundred, you're only 388. And then we're supposed to be at the same end at the same time. So I think they're trying to standardize it to make sure that everybody, it's a fair game for everybody.
So I'll be giving a presentation to the board on that in the next two weeks. Secondly, I spoke too soon. I mentioned last time I gave a report that we formed eight task forces. We had to add one more. And that's ELD, English Language Development. A quarter of our students are ELD. And that's an area that I was hoping we had to wait, but we could not wait. That's an area that needs attention, so we now have nine task forces that we're managing out of that services. And then lastly, uh, we're planning a staff development October 17. The details are not there yet, I know it's a short notice. Uh, it's in the area of math, not a program, but a strategy. Teachers can use in the classroom teaching math. So hopefully in the next two days, we can wrap up the details and announce it if it works out. So that's where we are.
You know, I had an opportunity to go to, uh, Piru and town council meeting. Diana is working on her school plan right now, so I'll do, is it tomorrow to do? When am I doing school plans to grade you? Again?
I'm sorry?
Is your, is your school plan due to Michael?
Yes, I turned it in today.
Yes, tomorrow. She's doing the final, the final touch-ups over there. And I went to town council and it was, it was an interesting, uh, event, very well attended. It was packed pretty much. And, uh, she kept her, she's chief, McGrath was there and a bunch of other people talking about the services. Probably ended up, I was invited to attend every single meeting. So that's a challenge, but it may have to be, so, but it was, it was a very good meeting. I think, uh, we'll do a lot more than that kind of stuff. Okay, we're done, right? Anybody else, anything else, Michael, anything else? Right? Got it? Okay?
So, um, just go out through item five and seven. Item five, I don't want to present the paper, consider routine, I will be inaccurate by single motion. None of the items will be discussed unless the board have it or notify the audience to request discussion. So I have items one through five. If there's any test question on those, you'll need to pull. Right, I'm going to ask you a motion to approve.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Discussion runs, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four zero. Action item, uh, J six, approve request for overnight bill check from Kimberly Conklin from High School Cross 15 teams to Ten Focus International and, Invitational, I'm sorry, in Fresno, California on October 7 through 8. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four zero. Action item J seven, Accord Board Policy Administration Regulations Updates. Previous supervisor, um, we have BP 5142.2 and AR 5142.2.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four zero. And now I obtain information to discussion. I obtain essential standards committee, please, any, I task board, open board?
I'll introduce you. I mentioned earlier my report that we have nine task forces, very important topics across the district. This will be the first of a series of updates that these task forces will be giving to board. Uh, this particular task force is headed by Chrissy, Principal at Mount Vista. And she has teachers across the district elementary schools who have been working with her very closely in completing this particular task. Her presentation will focus on the purpose of the task force, objectives, what this will look like. We will accommodate the staff, the timeline, and also ending the big picture. If I might suggest, the question should be held until after her presentation and she'll be glad to respond to them. That way you get the whole flow of the presentation. If some of the questions you might have, she'll be answering, she probably will be answering, answering them towards the presentation. So Chrissy, would you like to introduce any task force members who are here with you?
I have one task force member here, Mariellen Garcia. And I did promise them if they did attend, they would not be required to give, come up and give an impromptu presentation. But they were not excused from answering questions, so Mariellen, you are it. And she's a great representative of the committee too. So, um, welcome Mariellen and thank you. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, my name's Chrissy Shefferley. I'm the principal at Mount Vista Elementary School. And I have the opportunity this year to chair the Essential Standards Pacing Guide Task Force Committee. Um, the committee is made up of 24 teachers, um, one teacher per grade level from every single school. And what we did when we originally developed the committee, we didn't have representation from every school. We just had, um, a limited number. I think we had 16, um, from each total. But we decided that this, um, pacing guide task force was so important and we wanted the buy-in and the representation from every single school, that we decided to expand it. So grades K through six, a representative from each elementary school for each grade level. So 24 teachers. And, um, best decision, because we're developing pacing guides as a district. The, um, purpose of the task force committee is to develop district-wide systems. And we've been hearing that, um, over and over again this year. And the beauty of being a unified school district is we have the opportunity to work together and create systems. And, um, it's been a challenge, um, for us as principals too. Um, we meet prior to every big committee meeting to make sure that we're all on the same page so that Jan and Scott and Diana know the direction I'm going in and that they have the input as well for the whole administrative team to be able to guide our district. And one of the goals of that is so any teacher that comes to every single one of us, we're all on the same page and we're able to answer questions. So, um, we meet and collaborate. Uh, the second purpose of the task force is to establish the fidelity of our core curriculum and that's open court. Um, not saying that open court is the perfect curriculum. Um, I don't know if there is a perfect curriculum out there or a perfect assessment, but it's something that we've adopted, a curriculum that we've adopted as a district and it creates that fidelity. What we want to make sure is that it doesn't matter what elementary school your child goes to, whether they go to Mount Vista, Sespe, San Caetano, or Piru, they're all receiving a viable guaranteed curriculum. That means what's been taught in every grade level is the same. And the state standards has, has given us that direction. So that is the big purpose, is to make sure that there, there's fidelity in the curriculum. So that way, as we teach, as we give assessments, we're able to analyze our data. We're able to compare apples and apples. When we're all going off in different directions, it's hard to identify best practices. So second reason, one, develop wide, develop district-wide systems. Two is establish that fidelity to our district adopted curriculum. And again, like I mentioned, um, the objective is our, of our committee is to develop pacing guides for every single open court unit that will take us through the beginning to the end of the school year, kindergarten through fifth grade with the input from every single elementary school. What does this look like and what resources will we use? What we started off with is, um, I asked every single teacher to bring their own pacing guides. We wanted to make sure that we brought in the expertise of all the teachers representative of all the schools. They brought in work they had done on pacing guides and we were able to look at those. The next thing I provided to them were our film or unified school district essential standards. And I'm going to use second grade as a point of reference. What we have done district-wide over the past two years, scenario, two years, is identify essential standards. Basically what we've done is we've taken all of the standards, California state standards for every grade level and we've identified power standards. What we know is that by the research of Doug Reeves, um, he's one of our gurus in education. He states that, um, there is no way every single student can master every single standard. What we need to do is create a K through 22 educational system. That's his rationale for identifying power standards. Identify the standards, one, that are on our state tests. Two, identify standards that students need to progress to the next grade level. Three, identify standards that are high endurance, building blocks that, that kids need. So this is the work we've done over the past two years. Every single grade level has essential standards by trimester. Basically what you see on here are the standards that we expect every single student to master. Not just be exposed to, but to master. So we needed a accountability system for this. If we're going to expect students to master this, we need to create the pacing guides to make sure that what's taught in every single grade level in every single classroom is the same. Teachers may say, um, you're taking the autonomy away, you're, you're taking the freedom away. But the way I've explained it to the teachers is that, um, we need to think of education and teaching as an art and a science. The science has been given to us, the California state standards. We know what we have to teach and that is what we're doing here. We're prioritizing what needs to be taught. The art is the magic of the individual teacher in the classroom, the best practices, the teaching strategies. That is what we need our teachers for. Developing district-wide systems will create a system to be able to identify those classrooms, those schools, those grade levels that are achieving. But unless we compare apples to apples, there's not a way to measure that. So again, they brought their own pacing guides, that's for the validation, the buy-in, that we're acknowledging the work that they've done over the years. Two, we've given them the, um, essential standards. What we also did was I gave them pacing guides from Desert Sands District. Be here. Um, there's been many schools that have done a lot of work on pacing guides. But again, it's not the same if we just hand teachers someone else's pacing guide. We don't have the buy-in, we don't have the work that went behind digging into the standards. So they were able to bring their pacing guides, essential standards, Desert Sands pacing guides, the essential standards from our district. And also, um, have moved towards common assessments. Prior to this pacing committee, we were all over the page in the district as far as how we were assessing kids at, at every unit. Schools made their own, they used an assessment we created, they used a textbook assessment and they used, some schools used the reading lines. As principals, we got together, we looked at all the different types of assessment. This, um, assessment has been used successfully in high performing districts. This, uh, assessment has been, um, looked at in comparison to the CST. And there's districts that have found a relationship between a percent proficient on this and proficient on the CST. It's difficult, very difficult. Um, what, what we've noticed when we switched over to this, um, assessment, we saw scores drop about 10%. It's difficult, but what it is, it's aligned to the CST. So we want to make sure that we keep the expectations high and the rigor high. So these have been purchased for every single school. Again, a development of a district-wide system. Common pacing guide, common essential standards, common assessment. Based on these, we can analyze data, identify successful practices and replicate those practices within the district. So they were able to look at these and we have them for every single grade level. So they used their pacing guides, the essential standards, Desert Sands and these. So they had many points of references to develop these pacing guides. And they were also able to look at our film or unified school district trimester assessments. These are the assessments that were developed last school year and I think, uh, Scott is heading up this committee. These assessments were developed based on the essential standards. Basically you saw the standards, how are we going to measure whether or not students mastered them? Right here, this is the summative. So they looked at summative, they looked at our reading lines, they looked at pacing guides, they looked at essential standards, and from there they started creating pacing guides. What we did is, uh, we all met and I presented the, the committee with the overview. And then we broke off in every single grade level, created a plan on how they were going to tackle this. Um, some grade levels have elected to, um, utilize half-day subs in the afternoon because they didn't want instruction to be taken away from core. Um, I know fifth grade met today and finished all of your pacing guides. Um, kindergarten meets every Friday after school as a committee. Teachers are meeting by email and other teachers are using the sub out days. Third grade's just meeting after school. So different grade levels, depending on what his work for the, the grade level teachers have been getting together on their own time, developing these pacing guides. And, um, what I've heard is, and this is comments from three different schools. From fifth grade today, what one of the teachers stated, it finally makes sense. We've been putting the cart before the horse. Finally, the essential standards make sense. We're connecting the pieces for teachers. The individual work that has been done in the past, we're connecting them and making them meaningful. And I was, I had the, the privilege of being in the room while they were working and to hear teachers dig into the standards and say, no, 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 we need to teach this more. This is a hole in the curriculum, let's plug it in here. No, what does this standard mean to you? Is this being assessed? No, we're assessing this on the trimester assessment, we need to make sure we're teaching it. So it's exciting to hear teachers from four different schools collaborate on what is being taught. And again, that they're bringing teacher's additions. And what's really important in this is that we get the feedback from all of the grade levels. What we're doing is we're developing pacing guides, putting them into place. They submit them to myself and Diana Beadis, the principal from Piru. We review them, we make sure that every pacing guide contains the essential components and then we email the teachers back, either this is a draft, make the necessary changes or this is finally ready to go. They take that back to their grade level during collaboration. The pacing guides are implemented and along the way, we need the feedback. And then I've explained to them, you're asking your grade level teams along the way, is this pacing guide working? Are we hitting the areas that we need to teach? After we give the assessment, how did the kids do? So that's the feedback that we want from the committee to the grade level teachers back to the committee. And we know at the end of the, the school year, we're going to have to go back and make some revisions. But we've set the standard to that all revisions come through the committee. Because if we don't do that, then we're going to have revisions at each and every site and we'll have school pacing guides versus a district. So we've set those, um, parameters. Am I doing okay? Okay. Okay. And, and the way I, I framed it for teachers, um, was using a, a football analogy. And, uh, it makes sense to me and since we're in football, I'll use the football analogy. Basically what we have, this is a pacing guide. This is our playbook. It's our rules, our plays, how we're going to attack the game. It's identifying the standards. It's telling me when they're going to be taught, what assessments they're going to be on. It's telling me for mushroom in the rain, I'm not teaching mushroom in the rain. I'm teaching capitalization and proper nouns. I'm teaching base word families. I'm teaching drawing conclusions and I'm teaching capitalization. From that one story, those are the skills they have to hit. The days of just teaching... The days of just teaching mushroom in the rain are gone. It's being specific on what's being taught in that story. Week by week, with an assessment and review week all along, every single unit from the beginning to the end of the year, kindergarten through fifth grade. Amazing work. Again, this is our playbook. This is our direction. These are our rules. And in football, we have practices. And we know in football, from your practice, what do you do? You refine, right? You have to go over a play again, right? Practice a play. These are our practices. We call these formative assessments. We give these every six to eight weeks. From these assessments, we have to react and respond to them. This is not the final game. These are the practices. So we give these, we assess, we figure out what strand the students scored strong in, what strand the students scored weak in. Could they capitalize? Could they draw conclusions? If not, what do we have to do? We have to practice that play. That's what those tests do for us. A very different concept than tests, the way we gave tests when we were in school. You gave them, you put the grade in the book, and you moved on. We're now using these as formative assessments. In our world, we have three games before the Super Bowl. And the Super Bowl is our CST. But in our world, we play two games. We go to the Super Bowl, and then we play one more. Makes no sense. So our two big games that we play in our season are the trimester assessments. These are our summatives. We give these at the end of the trimester. So again, we're given our practices, practices. We finally have a game. What was the score? How did kids do? We give a couple of these, and then we play our Super Bowl, the CST, at the end. That is the accountability system that you'll see in Fillmore Unified School District now. And again, Fillmore Unified School District. Not Mountain Vista, not Sespe, not San Koyotano, and not Piru. You'll see it as a district-wide system, which is very exciting. Because we have the capability to move student achievement to levels that we have not seen before. Because I truly believe, I've been on distinguished school validation committees. I've been on curriculum audits. And when I go in and I look at the teaching, I look at the caliber, we have it. We have it. But we're not playing unified. We have islands of excellence out there. Teachers who are doing a phenomenal job. But we're not working together. And we're not capitalizing on the best practices in the district. It's because we're all playing in different leagues. Now we're going to be playing for Fillmore Unified with common district systems, common pacing guides, common assessments, common trimester assessments. And that's something that we have never done in this district. Challenging, very challenging. But something that has not been done in our small district. Any questions on that? That is, yes, John?
Just a question. Given that the CST is toward the end of the year, does the pacing guide, is the pacing guide set up to hit all of the state standards before the CST? Or how do you address that issue of the discrepancy between, you've got some days between CST and the end of the year? Do you squeeze all of it in before the CST? Or do you stretch it out and then hope for the best on the CST?
Well, Unit Six, and we have that puppy. You want to answer?
Sure. We came, actually, that was a situation we had today. We went ahead and calendared out to Unit Six, which in the past, out of the four fifth-grade teachers that had met, no one has completed Unit Six, ever, ever. We've each, I think, two of us out of the four had completed one story for Unit Six. And Unit Six out of open court is a review unit. Every single story, every single thing is meant to spiral as a review for the CST. So at this point, we would be finished the second week in May with Unit Six. And I'm not sure when the window is. So we probably, my guess, will be within that review unit. But what we decided to do was to go ahead and teach as if we were always teaching and then do what we've been doing, which is take language arts and do a review section. So kind of divide language arts in half into regular teaching day and to do a review at the same time, kind of parallel. Where in the past, we completely dropped open court and just reviewed. So this has given us an opportunity to continue to teach and review at the same time. So hopefully, we'll actually get a double review. So looking back, we're hoping that we can actually complete Unit Six before the CSTs because we started late.
If a unit six is the final unit?
Yes, for fifth grade.
So again, the objective is to finish the entire thing before the CSTs?
Or within, I would say, probably a week or two. You know, be really close. We will be in the middle of Unit Six during that CST timeframe.
The power of the essential standards is regardless of the unit, we have the standards that need to be taught. So again, as we near the end of the school year and get towards those final units before the CST, we can look at our pacing guides and make sure that we've integrated these standards in. So that's one of the things that, yes, we'll have to look at as the pacing guides are being developed.
Proceed.
Yes.
This plan and this system that you're creating is great. My concern would be the teaching strategies that are related to the standard. And I know we have individual teachers. My hope is that when they collaborate, they're sharing the best practices, the best teaching strategies in the classroom, and that the teachers are adopting them and not being threatened by this quote-unquote "teacher freedom", to do as you please when you close the door. I'm going to do my own thing in the classroom. And that's it. So how do we assess that part?
That is the perfect segue, Tony. The big picture, exactly what Tony has said. How do we identify best practices? We have, we need the data. The data will tell us what the best practices are. Because we could feel, feel, feel all we want. But unless we have the data to back up our teaching strategies, there's no validity in that. So the big picture here is this is what this system will enable us to do. Exactly what Tony is saying. Again, like I mentioned earlier, when we were in school, even when we taught, we have a grade, an overall grade, right? Johnny scored a 76 on the report. It goes in the gradebook if you're done. What our data disaggregation system allows us to do is be more specific, to do exactly what Tony said. This is one report that will be available once we have all this stuff in our system. This allows you to get student scores, student names. Remember, we looked at that pacing guide, and we saw conventions. We saw reading comprehension. We saw drawing conclusions. This breaks it out for you. How are we going to identify the successful strategies? We're going to look at these subscale areas. And we're going to identify the teachers who have the highest percentages in writing strategies and say, "Mrs. Rambles, what are you doing?" We've noticed that all of us averaged a 35% on writing strategies. You have an 80%. What are you doing? She shares, "Well, I did this. I'm using this. I did this activity." That's the best practices that you're talking about. But what we want to make sure is the best practices are connected to data. So this is one report that will be available for our teachers with this system in place. This could be done for the grade level. This could be done for the teacher. This could be done for the district. So again, you're identifying successful areas. Another thing we can do to share successful practices and analyze data. This is a report that is available. It's an item analysis. What it is, it has the number, question of the assessment, the number of students that got that question correct, the number of students that were not proficient, the number of students that were proficient. And the clue is no answer. So when I look at this, question seven. Only 19, 22% of the students got this question correct. 76% got it wrong. What was that question? Is it inferential comprehension? Is it factual comprehension? And if it's inferential comprehension, what do we need to do to teach these kids? It allows us to break the exams down this specific. And again, and identify schools, teachers, grade levels that are having success with this, all by using the same assessment. When we're all on the different page, you can't do this. Because you have nothing as a basis of comparison. So again, this is the big picture. This is the goal, to be able to identify best practices, to identify teachers, grade levels that are being successful. Again, once we have these common systems in place, here's the number of each question. Again, there's your standards. This is the percent correct for every question. This is nice. Question one, the correct response is in the black box. 23% of the students answered the correct response, A. But 56% of them answered number C. It highlights the most common incorrect response. So again, item analysis. Why in the world are these kids selecting C? What is tripping them up? What is making them answer C instead of A? When it's connected to standards, you can go back and reteach. Within your target time, your intervention time, you can go back and be very specific and intentional on what the kids know and what they don't know. But in order to do any of this, we have to have the district systems. Because if we're all teaching different things, all of us are deciding what standard is most important, there's not a basis of comparison. This is a report I found today. It's a great report. And I think we're scratching the surface with data-wise. This is a report, again, be more specific. We know that in our district, the subgroup that we're struggling in is EL. Also, SCD students on free and reduced lunch. This report here, let me blow it up a little bit for you. This takes all your students here. You can see 38% of them scored proficient on this test. 26% of them, 26% for English learners, 33% for students on free and reduced lunch. Sorry, 36%. 62% of our white students, 34 of our Hispanic students. This breaks it down by subgroup. So we can identify, are we hitting all of our students? We know that we're struggling in EL. 26% of them scored proficient overall. On the spelling, only 17% of them did. On reading comprehension, 12. Look at conventions, 52%. Where do we need to reteach for English learners? Reading comprehension. Where does ELD, what do we need to focus in on? Vocabulary development. What do we need to focus in on target? Reading comprehension. So we could disaggregate by subgroup, so we're not leaving any subgroup behind. So it allows us, again, to be specific. Again, I just wanted to show you a variety of reports that we're going to be able to do. This one I like. The colors are a little hard to see here. Basically, after you give an assessment, classroom A, it tells you the percentage of students that scored proficient, basic, far below basic, and far below basic. You can compare the classroom to the grade level to the district to be able to see how this teacher did in comparison to his or her overall grade level now compared to all of the second grade in the district. How are we scoring at a school? How are we scoring at a classroom? That's how you identify those best practices, by having the data. So again, this isn't possible unless we have district-wide systems, unless we have the essential standards, unless we develop the pacing guides. Without the pacing guides, we're all at liberty to teach what we want. Excuse me?
When you want.
When you want, absolutely. You can spend a whole quarter on drawing conclusions, but miss inference main idea and sequence. So this creates a common focus for each grade level based on the essential standards, your power standards. We looked at blueprints. We identified the questions on the CST, the standards that most vade for your buck. We looked at standards that had 14 questions on the CST versus standards that only had two. And that's how the essential standards were created. What we're finding is that there were some holes. Because it's interesting, not until now are these pieces coming together. They're meaning something. And that's the discussion that we have going on kindergarten through fifth grade in our district right now. A lot of work. I've heard comments from the kindergarten team. It's nice to be able to work together in a common area. We haven't done this for a long time, meaningful. The work is getting done, which is exciting. I also had a first-grade teacher from your school, Jan, email me and say, you know, "I hate to bring this on right now, but when can we do math? We're ready for math." Holy cow, gosh! And Mary Ellen said the same thing. She said, "We're ready for math." The goal is all pacing guides completed by December for every single unit K5. And then Michael will bring them to the school board, and we'll get those approved. And then, I don't think I'm going to be able to stop them. I think we're going to have to do math second semester. But they're asking for it because they want that common focus. So that is an overview of the pacing guide committee. It leads right into Scott's committee. They're looking at the standards, the essential standards. They're looking at the open court assessments. They're looking at the trimester assessments and make sure the alignment is right. Jan has the other piece. Once we have the alignment, once we have the common focus, we need to communicate it to parents. Now you have a report card. So that's how these interface. And then Michael brought on the curriculum committee, who are identifying the essential teaching strategies in the district. You walk in every classroom, these strategies are there. John's doing writing. Every principal has a different area. But when you take a step back, it's all part of the big picture to develop these systems, which if we do it right, are all going to support each other. So it's exciting. We're working hard. But like I said, I don't think we've ever done this. It's very interesting for me to take a step back and see district systems coming into play. Because we can't act alone. As much as I want to go off in one direction, and Jan wants to go off, Scott has ideas, we all call each other, "Okay, we need to meet." And we get together, and we make sure we're on the same page. We make sure that we're going in the same direction. And then the message gets communicated out to every single teacher. Common information, agreed-upon information. So it's exciting.
First, you mentioned reteaching. Is that part of the pacing?
Yes. Every grade level has some, has common elements. They have dates, lessons, story, essential standards, and then their skills. And they have to identify one week as review and assessment. Kindergarten, have all of them here. Show you fifth grades, because it's right here. Same thing. You have your date, you have your standard, you have your selection, your skills. Number seven, that week, reteach district writing test assessment. So part of the pacing guides, they had to put in a week of reteach. What first grade did was they said, "It's hard for us to wait." was they said, "It's hard for us to wait eight weeks to reteach." They incorporated every Friday as a reteach day. Because they said the kids are too young to be able to wait six weeks to reteach. So you see here, by date, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, assess, reteach. With the littler ones, we have to do it more frequently. And that's the flexibility that they have within the pacing guide. You create it to meet the needs of the students in the grade level, but there has to be some common elements. The date, the lesson title, the essential standards. You have to identify them by asterisks. One asterisk means it's going to be identified on the unit assessment. Two asterisks mean it's going to be identified on the trimester assessment. You have to have the essential concepts, what grammar skills, what vocabulary skills, what spelling skills, what reading comp skills you're going to have. And what some grade levels are starting to do, I know fifth grade, is identify gaps in the open court curriculum. You guys found that it didn't assess... Can you give an example?
Yes. We, the standard is for fifth grade is homographs, but all of the material that we have in open court is for homophones, which is actually a fourth-grade standard. So by teaching what the curriculum has and not looking at our essential standard, we've been missing the mark unless you supplement it somewhere. So it was a standard, but it was a fourth-grade standard. So if you weren't real careful, you could, you know, miss a whole chunk of teaching.
And I'm glad she pointed out that, because what it's doing is we're not just teaching open court from page one to page 250. Everything we do is intentional. We know exactly why we're teaching the stories. Exactly why. And when you start looking at the essential standards, you see holes. That's the power in getting together and looking at these. But again, we can't throw open court off the boat because we don't have a common curriculum to base this on. But we can identify the standards that are going to be hit in each story. So it's been great. It's been a, yes.
I just wanted to add one thing as a value piece on the teacher perspective. For example, in the last four weeks, fifth grade has received, and I'm counting off of just memory, so I might be off on my numbers, but about ten new students in the last four weeks. And out of those ten new students, we've had three that were inter-district transfers coming from other elementaries. And what we have found is, we always know, getting from different districts, we're going to not know exactly what you've covered and where you were. But what we didn't realize is getting those three students, we were all on completely different pages. So it was really eye-opening as a fifth grade to know that these three students who came from three schools in our community, every single one of them was on a different page. So that shouldn't be. So that is the value. When we talk today, those three students shouldn't have to be re-taught. They shouldn't have to have a gap in their education when they're right here across the street. And then the other value piece that we discussed today was the fact that now that this is done and we, fifth grade is finished and we created all the pacing guides, there will now be a revision, obviously a work in progress to kind of fine-tune. But now when we meet again, we can talk about best practices. We've already started to develop strategies and ideas of how this, how do you do this? How do you do this? Now you bring that and I'll bring this and we're going to share and we're creating a resource binder that will look the same at every single site. So fifth grade will have a binder of every possibility of an option that we've all agreed upon. So now the toolbox is there. And if, say, I choose to do appendix, you know, A, and you do B, but we all agree that they're doing the same thing, that's your choice. But we are all agreed upon what is going into the pacing guide and what's going into the binder. So our resource toolbox is complete.
And what's exciting as an administrator is you have teachers saying, "Can we do math next?" Can we develop a resource binder so we can all have the same things to supplement and reteach? That's exciting. That you have teachers getting into curriculum, working together to develop these common district-wide systems. So we're excited. We're excited at the end of the semester, we'll bring forward every single pacing guide, K through five, and then work on math next. Anything else? Wow!
We can hear that excitement.
It's exciting. It's very exciting.
It's exciting for us. I'm sure hearing that coming from you and everybody working together. Very thorough. A few questions I have jotted down because you went through your writing and answered them as you went along, so.
And bottom line, who wins? The kids. The kids. It's all about student achievement. And, you know, I love our theme for this year, "Students First, Whatever It Takes." And we are doing "Whatever It Takes" this year to create systems for our district. So it's exciting. But yeah, wow. A lot of work, but...
One observation. I think, you know, Jen, you've been on the board longer than I have. But as far as, as long as I've been on the board, I don't think we've spent this much time at a board meeting focused on curriculum. And I'm very happy to see that. That to me, I've often been, I've said before that, you know, we can be board members up here and talk about proving this or proving that, and that's not really what, that doesn't really have a huge impact on kids. But stuff like this has enormous impact on kids. And I'm really glad to see that we're focusing on this. It's great.
I just have a couple of comments.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Tell the good work is going on. No, no. I was taking notes on things that Chrissy said about data. We've talked about data-driven decisions. But that's how you, a coach, you make it all the time. You have to collect the stats. That's why you have scouts. Look at the data, then you make good decisions. And that's what we're trying to produce for our students. To give them the opportunity to be more successful than they're ever before. The other one, you're talking about mastering learning, the teaching, reteach. That's all part of the master learning that Tony and I probably went through. When you can't master it, you go back and reteach it so they can be mastered. And we've been in this era where we just let the kids go by without reteaching, without getting mastered. And everything's built on blocks. Especially in that. And that's why I'm excited about wanting to get that, because I think that's something that we all can do better. And then we talked about, when I was the system superintendent of Ed Services back in the day, probably almost twenty years ago, we were talking to the state about having our assessment at the end of June. So you have a whole year to really teach the kid.
I was going to say, you know, that would be completely logical.
Yes.
Now, we're, almost twenty years ago, we were pushing. And they said they couldn't get the data back. Well, technology now should be there, close enough, that we can actually teach the last day in school and then get the data back to us so the week is starting timing for the next year. And so I'm a firm labor and staff developer. I would like to end the last day with our kids and then pay the teachers to come back for two more weeks in the summer to take a look at data and then plan for the next year. When you close a lesson, you should always review and then plan for the next lesson. And we don't take, we don't do that. We close, it's over. We should close it, review, close it, and then be planning for the next time. And so I've been working really hard with legislators to give us some time to really do things that won't impact kids. And we have not done that. And the last one, Tony brought up, instructional strategies. Then Chrissy also brought up. And that's how you really, the art and the science, how do you merge that together so we give our students greatest opportunity to be good or better? What are we doing? There is absolutely research on what good teaching should look like. Set an objective. Okay? Show them what you want. You give them guiding practice. You practice with them. Then you give them independent practice. And you check on, that's what homework is. Homework should be independent practice on a skill. So when they come back, teachers can check that homework. Oh, this kid didn't get this. Not just the checkmark that he handed it in, but did he really? This is one of Lucy's issues. Did he really learn or she really learned it? If she did, or he did, what should you do? Audience? Re-teach. Absolutely. It's not fair to the student to say, "Just pass you on, and then you're being assessed." And we say, "Oh, not my fault." Yes, it is our fault. We should be reteaching that child that doesn't get it right. So then you do the, no, then you do your review. You assess them, you do your review, and you do what they call an advanced organizer. You start talking about what's next. And at recess, I used to tell my teachers to do this. Tell the kids at recess, when they go out, when you come back, I want you to know what the main theme of the story we just read is. Okay? So they'd go out there. And guess what they would do? You know what they, what do you think they would do? What would you?
Discussion.
You don't really know. They'd get together, so when they came in, they got the extra cut of point for having the right answer. And it's time, it's things like that. Time-long task. Take every opportunity to give a kid the knowledge that he's need to be successful. So little things. I used to stand in front of the lunch line. And we'd do a multiplication table with third grade kids. Say, "Come through. What's six plus seven? What's four plus three?" Okay, as they go by. You know, it became a challenge for those kids. They would actually want to please the principal by being able to answer correctly. And it's a little thing. It's not a big thing. It's a very little thing that you do to help kids learn. And I think there are those kinds of things that Michael is charged with, with our teachers, to come up with strategies that maximize the potential for our kids to do better. And I'm so happy you're here. I mean, you set some things tonight that were really wonderful. I appreciate that. There are things that are coming out now. We know we have great teachers. We know we have great kids. Well, we need a system to make sure that everybody's merging together and all going in the same direction for our students. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time. Michael?
Alan, you just don't know how proud I am of what they've accomplished.
I was almost accused. Music in my ears are like, whoa! Whoa, it's cruel!
I'm going to call my wife tonight and tell her that the work is done.
And you go, nah, 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 nah.
Coming home.
This is got massive.
Chrissy can handle the math. Chrissy?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And we express, you know, the superintendents and the board's appreciation for the work that you and the task force really has done. And thank you. I was there when you guys were meeting. So I appreciate that work. And coming up next will be some of the principals also updating you.
All the principals asked them to be here so they can see what it is that's on the boards that are in jail, so they can take a look at your knowledge, what you've got. And then when they do their presentation, they can review a little bit about what Chrissy talked about and see how that flows into the next demonstration or report that we have. Everything should flow. Everything should be coming and flowing in. So at the end of the day, like Chrissy said, everything makes sense. All of a sudden, aha comes. You go, whoa! This all makes sense now. Why are we doing D? Why are we doing essential standards? Why are we doing standard-based report cards? Why are we doing all these things? And so as Michael gives, has the teacher and principals give the reports, then the board can see how it all makes sense. In isolation, it doesn't. And I was accused a lot of times that you're just piling stuff on. Okay? Just pop. But then at the end of the day, they all said, "Wow, no wonder you did it." It's almost magical the way our principals are working on this stuff. And I really appreciate the hard work. And especially teacher input. So important that we have teachers on the frontline come up and say, "This is what we need." And I'm very proud of what you've done, Chrissy, and what you've done. And I'm sure that the principals are, I know they are. Michael's saying some good things while it's happening. And I appreciate that a lot for our kids. And thank you.
You're not done.
Not yet.
Not yet.
It's good to see that the principals are taking the leadership over here. That's so important. I know we as a board have been very concerned about the leadership as being promoted at each side. See if that's happening.
Yeah. Thank you, Tony. Because part of, part of leadership is making sure that you train everybody who's with you. And we're going to have, you're going to see a strong focus on staff development, And we're going to have, you're going to see a strong focus on staff development, whether it's voluntary or not. You're going to see us provide opportunities for our teachers. And I think they're going to go after it to learn things. I think they're, everybody, teachers, you know, they really want to know what it is supposed to do to be successful. I have not heard a teacher say, "I want my kids to fail." I've never heard one teacher say, "No, not, not, even no business to want the kids to fail." And so I think it's up to us, our staff, to provide the leadership and give opportunities for our principals and our teachers and our parents to really know what's important. And you can do the pans out, class by staff. I'll make this last comment, I promise I will be quiet till the next one. How are classified produced? Now, when I was a kid, I was growing up, and I knew my favorite person was in elementary school was my custodian. You know why? Because when I went to school, the first person I saw was that custodian. And he was so nice and he was so pleasant. And he was from a foreign country, could barely speak the language back then. But you know what? He was my favorite person. When a kid goes to class, goes to school, and he's riding the bus, the first note they see is that bus driver. You don't pour this to that bus driver, smiling, saying, "Welcome, come on, boy." I mean, because you don't know what happened to that child at home that night. You don't know if they had dinner. You don't know if the father was upset, you don't know what happened. But if that bus driver makes that kid feel good coming in, it changes his whole day. Same thing when a parent comes into a school and the secretary's there or the clerk, and they are pleasant. "How are you going to help you?" And they're smiling and they're trying to, you know what that does to that parent? That's all a part of the system, our system, how do we make it better? It's not just about the nuts and bolts, it's about the affective piece as well. It's, it's not just stats and numbers and facts. It's also that other piece that bonds everybody together, that's the affective piece. How you engage. So I talk about it and Cynthia's done it in her meetings with the office managers. That is so crucial. I don't care if you're a new supervisor, I don't care if you're a ground spin, I don't care what it is. Us adults have an obligation to make sure our kids feel good about coming to school. And that's our goal. Not only are they going to learn, but they're going to be good citizens in the greatest country in the world. I've said that over and over. There is no better country than America in the world. Or none. I don't care if all this stuff that you talk about, how bad it is, go somewhere else and see. This is still the best place to go. And I think we should take advantage of that and make sure our kids can become great citizens. And that's the goal, Michael and I. I have that since we've been working together. So I appreciate you listening to me. If you're classified or whoever you're out there, parents, smile at a kid. Say, "Good morning," and see how they feel. And first I'll look at you, "What are you doing today?" I'll watch this little kid going across here in the morning. I said this to Sestie, "He couldn't have been this tall." I mean, the backpack was bigger than him. And he's carrying his backpack and he's having a good time, smiling, laughing with his brother. I think he was walking to school. I mean, what happens between that and 13? What happens between, something in there is not connecting good enough for those kids. That face that I saw walking across, so cute, it was unbelievable. I would have been a camera expert. That guy, he was dragging that backpack, it was so cool. So, so we're going to need everybody's help. Everybody's help to really put Fillmore on the map as a place where you want to live and that kids, and you wanted to go to this school in Fillmore. Here's where you want to live. I look down the road, I drive every time I go home that way. Awesome Town, right? That's what they call Santa Clarita, right? Which is Awesome Town, right? Sounds even on the radio. Okay, we're going to be better than Awesome. We're going to be better than Awesome. We're talking about better than Awesome. Okay? Thank you very much, my teacher.
No, that was very heartfelt. You mean every word you say, so. Did you get that, Sammy? Did you? Well, we're almost, we're almost in here. Okay, so we're going to move on. Let's move on to, thank you, very, very powerful. So K9. We're passing the administrative regulation updates. And we have the first meeting. You all have to be here this time. So, must we have questions? All right, well then we are now at future meetings. And we have October 18th, which will be at 5:30 here. And for closed session, 6:30 for a regular meeting. November 1st, the same, and November 15th. All three, 5:30 for closed session, 6:30 for the regular meeting. And I just want to remind you, I won't be here on the 18th. Is anyone going to miss out on November 1st and 15th? Well, okay. All right, so we're now go on to item, and we're closing comments on agenda building of members. Anyone have, John?
No, I just would report that I attended the Ag dinner, countywide. Is that what it's called, countywide Ag dinner?
Ag appreciation.
Ag appreciation at Limoneira. And it was well-attended. Fillmore was well-represented. And the food was very good. And the drink was even better. It's a non-sponsored school activity.
No, I went to the same dinner at Limoneira and it was great. We all won a prize. I got a box of avocados and stuff in heaven with that. And I also went to the homecoming game with Frasier Park. Very interesting. Mike was a busy man. We had lightning and post called the game for a while and we had the downpour, but made it all exciting. We won, so kind of.
Yeah, I also joined the, I was asked to drive in the homecoming parade, so I was fortunate enough to drive my daughter. She was a homecoming junior princess.
Can you say "drive" now?
Yes. It was in the parade.
But you escorted her though.
Yeah, I escorted it, had to. But I guess I got baptized before because the clouds opened up and as we were walking over to the other side of the field, everything came down. Well, fortunately, I mean, her, she was fine, no, she was fine.
Oh, okay.
I just had to give her the coat. So anyway, when they, what's interesting is in the pictures, I think, that are online, you can't tell that I'm sopping wet, but I'm literally dripping wet from head to foot. But everything, the rain went away for the actual ceremony. They had us walk back, did the introductions, and then the rain went away for that parade. So that was nice. And then I also attended the cross-country meet at the UCSB, the Goon Track, or cross-country invitation. And it was very well, the boys' cross-country team came in first. I think the girls came in second. Very good, yeah. Our cross-country team is very reassuring this year and looking for great things.
And Sam is on it.
Sam is on it, that's right.
Yeah.
I'm glad you did a smile. Yeah, you did a smile. It's great.
Which just brings up a little thing for me, I could probably, just having heard from, I don't know how many of you know, one of our alumni, Brian Ball. I guess he just, he just qualified for the cheerleader trials. He made time, so. So, and I know sometimes he used to run with the, does he still do that?
Yes, he still runs with us.
He still runs with you?
When he's in town.
Yeah. So that's really exciting. One of our own is really climbing that ladder. I wouldn't have it off. And he said he was, he was something like two minutes behind. And I can't remember who he was, but I think he took that, pretty sure he took that off the last thing. They trained together, so it's, it's, it's just exciting.
A lot of hard work, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it really is. Okay, so we will be going back into the closed session, so I will entertain the motion.
So we'll be, sure.
Great, okay, second?
Second.
All the way there?
Aye.
Okay.